Good evening. Do I have a motion to open the November 20th, 2024 regular business meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Michelle, would you please do a roll call?
Kelly Cosa.
Here.
Kelly Woolley-Macon.
Here.
Benjamin Burge.
Here.
Robert S. Sullivan.
Here.
Please go with our executive committee.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one set of minutes to approve from the November 6th, 2024 business meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, if any member of the public would like to address the board, you may do so by approaching their podium and state your first and last name. But it does not appear that we have any participation this evening. Moving on to my exciting president's update. This evening, I actually have some very exciting news that I want to share, and I know that there was an email sent out from the Board of Education, but I do think that it's super important to highlight, and I also, any members of the public that may have missed the email, I highly recommend that you go back and take note, and there's a couple links that you can watch. But the Board of Education is very excited and proud to share some very exciting news about our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Wool, and it's a really, it's a point of pride for our district and community. Dr. Wool recently received two prestigious awards, the 2024 Columbia University Teachers' College Distinguished Alumni Award and the Horace Mann Champion of Public Education. So Columbia University Teachers College Distinguished Alumni Award recognized Dr. Wool for his extraordinary leadership in guiding our school district to sustain academic excellence and fostering a culture that honors and respects all students. So Teachers College shared an interview with Dr. Wool, and that's what I actually recommend, please go back and watch, it's fantastic during the award ceremony that Dr. Wool was in attendance for. But, and the Horace Mann League also recognized Dr. Wool as a champion of public education for his transformational and influential work advancing exemplary public education in the United States. For 23 years, Dr. Wool's visionary leadership in Harrison has exemplified a commitment to public education and significantly impacted our community. He has expanded countless opportunities for almost two generations of Harrison's children, and we are forever fortunate. His leadership and relentless dedication to all of our children have established Harrison Central School District as a lighthouse district and setting a standard for excellence for others to follow. The New York State Education Department recently recognized that lighthouse status, naming Harrison High School and Lewis M. Klein Middle School as mentor schools to support and guide schools statewide. So we invite the entire Harrison community to join us in celebrating Dr. Wool on these richly deserved recognitions, and we are deeply grateful for his unwavering commitment to our children and community. And just to be frank, this is part of the reason why I continue to serve on this school board, because I so deeply believe in the school's mission and your leadership, and our kids are so fortunate to be living in this environment.
Kelly, would you mind?
Okay.
Together with Mr. Sullivan, we're at this point the longest-serving school board members, and I would obviously like to add my congratulations, but I think over my 11 years of service and more years than that as a parent in this community, what, I think probably the deepest impact is the transformation and the impact of Dr. Wool's leadership on our, the professional team in our schools. He makes a comment in the video about how even if someone came in and told us we had to do something differently, and we had to stop giving children opportunity in the way that we do, no one in our district would agree to that. We would fight that with everything we have. I believe teachers would, all of our administrators, and I, at this point, I really deeply believe that the parents in our community understand what it is that we do in these schools. Speaking personally, having grown up in a place where children were sorted and selected and they decided who the smart ones were at a very young age, I, I have been overwhelmed by the way in which we look at children and realize that every single day that they are in our schools is an opportunity for us to shape them and to guide them, and to give them every opportunity that they have and that they should have, to guide them to be the best people they can be as students, as human beings, and as members, as citizens of this country. So, thank you for that. I feel incredibly grateful to be working with all of these school board members as we support the work that Dr. Wool and people in this room and in all of our schools do to continue his work.
Thank you, Kelly, thank you. And yeah, just to, you know, even thread the needle a little bit further, the courage to speak up and to dare to be different is why you're a true champion, and we pride ourselves on being the lighthouse and being different, because that's the true equity for all students in our district. And we shed the light on so many others. Yeah, oh, please.
I want to echo what Kelly Mangas said, I agree completely with her remarks, and we both served on this board for a long time and observed the changes in the district all for the better, all due to this leadership. So I also want to congratulate Dr. Wool on these two well-deserved and prestigious awards. I've known him for more than 20 years, and have had the honor of serving on this Board of Education for more than 10 of the years of his tenure as superintendent, and it's really been an honor. He became superintendent at a difficult time of transition for this district. At the time, our family observed his ceaseless efforts to turn things around and to do the hard work required to gain the trust of the community through his leadership. As our young children were reaching school age, we were convinced that we should actually stay in Harrison, and that's mostly due to the leadership of Dr. Wool and his vision for the district. And it turned out to be a good decision. All three of our kids graduated from Harrison High School. For more than two decades, Dr. Wool has shown tireless dedication in pursuit of the goal of providing equity and access to every single student in all six of our schools in the district. In large part due to his efforts and with the support of the Harrison community, Harrison has become a lighthouse district, I love that term, setting an example for others. So congratulations again.
Thank you, Rob.
I know it's not my turn, but I can't just let all those compliments go by. I have, I don't keep mementos much, but I do have a note from Christina and Rob on the night that I was made interim in this room, and it was a, it was a terrible night, really, we had just gone through a terrible tragedy, but I'm very happy that people are giving me credit, and certainly it is my vision, and I feel to be, honestly, to be so fortunate to be able to pursue something I care about so much, but you don't, you never make a journey of this magnitude without really brave people doing things. And I can remember Mr. Singer and Mrs. Stiberzi and Mr. Sullivan, a woman named Kate Barnwell, whose neighbors weren't speaking to them for a long time because they didn't understand that what we collectively were trying to do was to elevate this entire community. And we have really done something as a community that is just so incredibly rare, and that is we, we actually live by the credo that everybody's child matters. And to me, I get to do the best job in the world now, I mean, it's compared to where we were and what we went through to get here, but to Kelly's point, the fact that this mission is so deeply shared and carried, and, and you know, I'm looking out at my team who are wily overworked, but I say to them all the time, the work that we get to do is not work that you get to do in many places. Everything that we do shapes the lives of a child, and so I really do appreciate these recognitions. There are two things that make them significant to me. Both of them were caused by colleagues that felt what I was doing, but more importantly, the work that we were doing was worthy of recognition, and anytime we have a chance to bring Harrison's work to another place, we meet the mission of a lighthouse district. And you all know, there's a funny story behind that. I made a speech back in 2006, and it was mostly mocked, but I got thousands of lighthouses, literally, of every kind, tie clips, ties, so it turned out to be not a joke. You know, Dr. Mulholland, because she, the master conductor there, got her application in in short order for Harrison High School and the middle school to be recognized as mentor schools, and we were 21, two of 23 schools across the state that fell into that category. And that is the work of great principals, great teachers, by the way, great civil servants. When we talk about who's elevating kids, it's everybody, and that's what is so amazing to me. It's the thing that energizes me every day, what a great place to be if you are a child. So I need to thank you for the recognition, I truly appreciate it, but thanks to each of you for being ethical and principled and always making difficult choices, even sometimes when people are not so nice. We just put our heads down and all of us ask the same question, what is in the best interest of the children that go to school here? And as long as we do that, I don't think anybody will extinguish that flame, no matter who's sitting in these chairs, and that's the thing that makes us unique. So thank you.
Well deserved. Okay, so some other good news in the district. Chase Endy was named a finalist for the National STEM Festival, and yeah, big congratulations. And I believe that the announcement for him is, I think, posted on the website, but the National STEM Festival celebrates the exceptional talent of our nation's youth and the innovative businesses driving progress all year round, and their mission is to guide bright minds toward careers in STEM and to tackle the world's most pressing challenges. So Chase will now compete to become a National STEM Championship, which could earn him a spot in a week-long STEM Festival in Washington DC in March of '25. So best of luck, Chase. Our high school band, the Harrison High School Marching Band, performed in the West Harrison Veterans Day, and the ceremony, and they proudly represented the district honoring our local veterans, and the band director, Deanna Lurcher, shared a message from the town event coordinators that they were, they were so happy to extend their sincere thanks to the band for spending their day off with the veterans, and the band's presence really added to the pageantry and tradition of the day, and they were all so very grateful. And a reflection from a veteran of the ceremony stated, "This is the welcoming we never received when I came home from Vietnam. You will never know what it means to me for these kids to do this for us. I haven't felt this proud in a very long time." So meaningful, and I just love, this is another community building. Wonderful to watch.
And hooray for our band, they do this every year. On their day off, they go and march in the Veterans Day Parade, so great stuff.
Our high school debate team attended the Apple Valley National Championship in Minnesota. Reese Potash placed sixth, then was the top speaker out of 130 debaters from around the country. Jack Borman placed eighth, Jack Gessner placed 12, and Adina Naim was in the top 45. And at the Scarsdale Tournament, Paige Bianchini was the tournament champion. Jonita Ismaj Lucaj, sorry if I'm butchering that, placed third, and Kevin Iwansky placed fourth, and this is the team's fifth tournament win this season.
And when you read the next paragraph, you'll read, they had another win.
They had another win. Yeah, the debate team won the NYCFL Bronx Fall Debate Tournament. Alicia Zehany was a novice champion and top speaker, Atar Gandhi placed second in varsity, and Jonita Ismaj Lucaj. And this is the team's sixth tournament so far.
That's pretty good.
Yes. Our Preston third graders met with Harrison veterans as part of the Who We Are Unit, which explores how our stories shape who we are, and the students interviewed veterans about their experiences serving our country, and they performed songs representing such military branch and presented each veteran with a card to recognize their service.
And I just have to say, the Who We Are Unit is a rewritten primary years program, you know, PYP unit, and many of the people sitting in this audience had a hand in writing that unit, so we're very excited about that unit.
We had a very exciting NCAA, we had a triple commitment. I was in attendance for the signing, and what made it so incredibly special was, and from what I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was three girls from the same team, varsity lacrosse, signing Division One schools to play. Lila Burgery for Fairfield University, Chelsea Porto signed with Marist, and Harper Lappin will be going to Lehigh University. And the three of them are best friends, and the way that they spoke, not only about one another, but their experience in the schools, their experience with the coach, and so many from the athletic director to Fish, his workouts, and just how they shared their experiences, how they could be better humans and better athletes and better students, and they pushed each other. It was so beautiful, and I was really moved by their words and their communication with each other. So best of luck, girls. You still have, they still have a whole season, actually, which is the most exciting part about it. They'll be here for their senior lacrosse. Our swim team, the Harrison, they finished 12th out of 33 competing teams at the Section One Swimming Finals. Our medley relay, Zoe, Angelina, Rico, and Sophia finished sixth, and the same relay team finished 12th in the 400. Angelina Lingiza missed the state cut in the 100 breaststroke by less than a second, finishing 10th behind Sophia Bondikov, who finished fifth. Sophia will compete in the state championship and qualify for six events at states, but she can only swim for two, setting yet another record for the most qualifications at the state level and most consecutive state appearances, which is five. Her imprint will be left on Harrison swimming for many years to come.
And I received late word from Mr. Galano today that Sophia has a signing coming up.
I saw that.
We're not going to tell you where or when until we get to our next meeting, but we're very excited for Sophia.
And that concludes my update. I wish everyone a wonderful and happy Thanksgiving with family or friends or whatever way that you celebrate and enjoy some time, Dr. Wool.
Well, before Dr. Wool, Mrs. Jiberg reminds me she has a policy update.
Oh, a policy update, thank you.
Hi. The Policy Subcommittee recently met to review and update policies from the 1000 series related to the district bylaws. These policies address the district's core values, the Board of Education's governance responsibilities, and the role of Board of Education trustees. These revised policies are shared with the Board of Education for informational purposes tonight, and the Board will conduct a first reading of these revised policies on December 11th.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to the Policy Committee for their deep dive into our policies. I'm so impressed with how we keep them current, and Brian's good work in helping the Board work their way through that policy year after year is greatly appreciated. Okay, my updates, I'm going to keep it very concise because we have some wonderful people here to present tonight, and some of them are tired because they've had long days, but I do just want to remind some folks, would you join me at the podium, Brian? We want to just talk one last time about the upcoming, very important, emergency evacuation drill. It's a requirement by New York State Education law, but it's also something that we take very seriously, and we need your help. Before I turn it over to Dr. Lee, moms and dads, if you have not updated your emergency information, do so now. Do not wait until we get closer, because those are the days when things are really hectic, and we use this as an opportunity to practice in real time what it would be like in an emergency to dismiss your children. And at the elementary level, remember that's one-to-one. There's no busing on that day. We want parents to come, or the guardian, or the person on the emergency card to pick up their child. So if you didn't do the update, do it. Brian will give you the details right now.
Great, thanks, Dr. Wool. Earlier this week, we sent all the parents and members of our school community a letter with the details for the early dismissal next week, which gives us the opportunity to practice a couple of things. We practiced a really important drill within the district, which is part of our safety plan, but we also practiced the process of dismissing students to parents, and as Dr. Wool mentioned, at the elementary level, we never provide bus transportation when we have a rapid early dismissal, because we always want to ensure that there's an adult at home to greet that child. So when parents or the adults that they've designated on their emergency card come to pick up the children next Wednesday, we need to make sure that everybody has a photo ID at the elementary level. That's really essential, and those will be checked, so remember, please to bring that. The other thing that I want to mention is that we're using a communication tool in the district called Crisis Go, and the letter includes instructions for parents to download that app, and that this app will be the main primary way we communicate with parents in the event of an emergency, to share time-sensitive information. So if you haven't already downloaded it, we'll be using the app that day as part of our drill as well, so we encourage all parents to do that. They can receive timely notifications for all six of our schools in the event of an emergency. The last thing that I'll mention in regard to the drill next week is that the Harrison Police Department will be a real active presence on all six of our campuses that day. They play a critical role on days like, well, they play a critical role every day in our schools, of course, and in our community, and we're really grateful for that partnership. And on this day in particular, they're assisting us in conducting this drill, and so they give us helpful information that helps us refine our safety plan. So a word of appreciation to their partnership, we really, it's been just essential for us in the work that we do in the school district. So stay tuned. Oh, last point there, Wednesday morning, we'll also send a voice message and an email again to all parents, but the voice message will go to all phone numbers that we have on record for every child. That includes all emergency contacts, so Grandma and Grandpa may get a phone call next Wednesday morning, but that's how we test those numbers, because any number that's inactive or doesn't work, we do outreach to those families to make sure that all the emergency contact numbers we have are accurate. So lots of communication next Wednesday before we send everybody off to Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Brian. Much appreciate your coordination of all of that. I met with the six principals and Brian just yesterday, we went over some nuances to some of the things we're going to be doing, and we're very focused on getting it right. Safety is critically important to us and to you, so make sure you follow up, moms and dads. So now I'm really excited. Let's get to the good stuff, the really exciting moment. We have been working so hard and so long to bring back elementary world languages. We had a really exciting program, but I would argue that under the incredible efforts and research and innovation of One Gen Egan, the new program, even though it's in its infancy, is already proving to be more effective. The model is incredibly innovative, you're going to hear tons about that tonight, and I think the person who's starting us off is none other than Mrs. Egan. Please, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for the opportunity to give you an update on our elementary world language program. Today, we're going to take a look at the world language experience from different points of view, from the point of view of our world language teachers, our classroom teachers, and then the part that I'm most excited for, our students. But before we do that, I just wanted to start off by extending such a heartfelt thank you to our board and to our amazing community for helping us get here, because were it not for your support, we wouldn't be able to say that elementary world language has begun. So thank you so, so much, we're so excited to be at this point. Just a reminder of the journey that we took to get here, it's really been an iterative process that demonstrates really the essence of teamwork on this amazing team that I'm so proud to be a part of. Together, we designed a really unique model in the elementary world language world. We have two teachers who spend five weeks in each of our elementary schools, and during that time, one of the teachers pushes into second and third grade classes for 30 minutes every day, and the other teacher pushes into fourth and fifth grade classes for 30 minutes every day. They complete one unit using the PYP framework, and the idea is that after they rotate through all of our schools, they'll come back and they will complete a second unit using the PYP framework. So our goals really were to expose students to an additional language other than English in a language-rich environment where the target language is used, and kids are getting so excited about learning another language that it builds this foundation to prepare for proficiency at the secondary level. And because of these amazing people that I get to work with, we're, we're living that, which is really great. So just an overview of our experience, it is immersive. When you walk into a classroom during the time that world language is happening, you are hearing only Spanish from start to finish, and our students are following along, they're responding to directions, they're speaking to the teacher, they're speaking to their classroom teacher, who is kind of also learning alongside them, which is really fun and wonderful to see. Our world language teachers are experts at making language comprehensible, so the energy level from the two teachers that we have, Ms. Torres and Ms. Coolahan, is so high, I don't know where they get their energy level, but they are using non-verbal cues, they are using visual support, and the kids know exactly what is going on. It's really engaging, students are learning foundational language skills to begin to talk about themselves and the world around them, they're talking about how they're feeling, they're asking others how they're feeling, and it's just so joyful. They're singing songs, they're listening to music, they're playing games, and all the while, they're really learning and acquiring a lot of foundational language. But who better to give a window into the program than our world language teachers themselves? Now, they've had a very busy week, so we are going to hear from them via a video that I am going to play right now, that hopefully works.
We're going to turn around?
Works.
Hola, I'm Señora Torres. I am the second and third grade Spanish teacher, the world language teacher. My name is Marissa Coolahan, the students call me Señora Coolahan, and I teach fourth and fifth grade Spanish in Harrison. I've been having such an amazing time teaching our kiddos, and they've been so engaged and so excited for our time together.
It's been a really warm welcome. Everybody's been really wonderful in terms of welcoming us into the classes and helping us get the kids excited about the program, and every time we leave, the kids are disappointed that we're leaving, but then we get to tell them to come back, so it's been a really fun, everyday experience. We get to make some relationships with the kids because we've seen them every day, even though it's for five weeks, and then we'll come back and see them again. If you do.
The teachers have been amazing and collaborative, they call me Model, they participate in the lessons as well, which the kids really, really enjoy, being another language learner in the process.
Teachers have been really open to collaborating, some of them, for some reason, the class gets canceled for whatever reason, they want to continue doing some of the routines that we do in class, so we'll show some of our slides, play some of our videos, or sing some songs, so they've been really great about collaborating and continuing, being enthusiastic in the moments that we have with the program.
They've been so helpful with each other as well, helping each other when if I'm saying something that maybe another student doesn't understand, then they use each other as a resource, as a resource, which is really sweet to see, and it's definitely building empathy in the classroom as well.
Just a couple of things to highlight there, because I realize without some context, you might be wondering, why is somebody playing the trombone in class? Well, one of the games that they play happens to be a guessing game, and just by
We get to make some relationships with the kids because we've seen them every day, even though it's for five weeks, and then we'll come back and see them again. If you do.
The teachers have been amazing and collaborative. They help me model. They participate in the lessons as well, which the kids really, really enjoy being another language learner in the process.
Teachers have been really open to collaborating. Some of them, for now, for some reason, the class gets canceled for whatever reason. They want to continue doing some of the routines that we do in class. So we'll show some of our slides and play some of our videos or sing some songs. So they've been really great about collaborating and continuing the enthusiasm that we have with the program.
They've been so helpful with each other as well, helping each other when, if I'm saying something that maybe another student doesn't understand, then they use each other as a resource, as a resource, which is really sweet to see, and it's definitely building empathy in the classroom as well.
Just a couple of things to highlight there because I realize without some context, you might be wondering, why is somebody playing the trombone in class? Well, one of the games that they play happens to be a guessing game and just by chance, you're guessing what color is going to come up next. And if you don't get the correct answer, affectionately, the class will say wah, wah, wah. Well, turns out, somebody had a trumpet and now plays that every time the game is played. So we're very excited to participate in that regard. And then you might have noticed at the end, a puppet. His name is Monito and he makes frequent appearances in the fourth and fifth grade class and the students absolutely love him. In fact, the student featured at the bottom photo there has a Monito Desk Pet now. So Monito is definitely trending, which is lovely. But just a couple of other things to point out that I think are really important to mention, just again, that high level of engagement. When you're watching the kids in class, they're paying attention, they're eager to participate, they're eager to take risks and try and use their Spanish. There's such a high level of collaboration between the world language teachers and then between the world language teachers and the classroom teachers. And it's really a great opportunity to learn from one another because anytime that you're in any of our teachers' classrooms, it's a lesson in best practices. So it's a really unique model because our classroom teachers stay in while the world language teachers come in. So it's a great opportunity for learning. And to talk a little bit more about the point of view of our classroom teachers, I'm going to turn things over to Mark Woodard.
Thank you, Jen. Good evening, everybody.
Hi, Mark.
Thank you for having me tonight. I'm Mark Woodard. I'm the principal of Parsons Memorial Elementary School. And after a little over a year of planning and researching and working alongside my colleagues on the instructional team, all of the elementary principals, assistant principals, Jen Egan, our superintendents, and many more, through the research and refining of practices to figure out what the program we wanted to have and what the program should be to be meaningful and engaging for our kids here in Harrison. I think something that you won't find necessarily anywhere else. We at Parsons were very proud and excited to be the school that got to welcome the world language program, I'll say back, but welcome this program to the Harrison Central School District this year. And although we knew we were very well-prepared, as the first day of school approached, as anyone could imagine, questions started to arise. But as day one came and went, the excitement from our teachers and students in their classrooms, in the hallways, and just throughout the building was palpable. And it was just demonstrated in so many exciting ways. Our students, outside of their Spanish learning, outside of their classrooms with world language, most wanted to continue their learning independently. They were finding ways, whether it was in the cafeteria, to sing those songs that they were learning with their teachers. They were out at recess, playing academic games that they had learned with Senora Torres and Senora Coolahan. They were bringing their laptops, their Chromebooks and iPads out to engage in their Spanish Google classrooms, to continue independently learning. And you can bet, they were sure excited and proud to share and show off all that they had learned with anybody that would listen to them. So they were very excited about the work that they were doing. As you spoke with our teachers and they saw this, they were very excited to see how accessible the learning was, the learning of this language for all of our students regardless of their readiness level for the learning of any type of content. They were able to engage in meaningful ways and be excited about their learning, which is exciting for all of us to see. And as you heard Ms. Egan speaking, our world language teachers were certainly excited to get to work alongside all of our teachers. But likewise, our teachers were so excited to work alongside them, to learn and see new and different instructional strategies that can influence their work with students on a day-to-day basis. When you're working alongside a colleague every day, it's just inherently embedded professional development and professional learning opportunities for all of our colleagues and our faculty, something that we were all so excited about. As you take a moment to talk to any of our colleagues, and you'll see just some of the quotes directly from some of them there with some words highlighted, you hear from teachers like Ms. Cole, who's a teacher in an upper-grade classroom with a small group of self-contained students with specific learning needs. And you see that she's excited to share about the opportunities that her students had to feel confident in expressing themselves. How cool and important is that, to hear just about any person, any human, feeling confident about how they're expressing themselves and using this as a vehicle to do that? You have Ms. Thompson and Ms. Shama, who work together in a co-teaching classroom, talking about the accessibility of the learning, learning all about the instructional strategies that the teachers utilize, that they can also utilize, as well as their getting to notice their kiddos going out into recess and just engaging in different ways. Or Ms. Adameak, one of the ENL teachers over at Preston, talking about the connections that her students are able to make with each other, with their friends, with their families, and in many cases, themselves. So lots of really great work that we were very excited to see and have. At this point, you've gotten to hear from our world language teachers, you've gotten to hear from our teachers, you've gotten to hear a bit from us, but we thought it was really important to hear from perhaps, well, we know, the most important piece of the equation, our students.
Because I like counting. We were playing I Spy Your Eye, Simon Says. And I like the videos. Now I can speak to my grandfather in Spanish because he's from Puerto Rico. She would print out quick faces about the emotions we were doing. And she would put it on paper and we would cut out those words and stick it in that blank of the paper to match those feelings.
I learned that Chinese thing, like sad cry.
Like if you're happy, you say, "Me siento feliz." Like, "I'm happy." Or, "Me siento cansado." "I'm tired."
Comer esta crema, comer esta crema, comer esta crema hoy.
Uno, dos, tres, cuatro, cinco, seis, siete, ocho, nueve, diez, once, doce, trece, catorce, quince, dieciséis, diecisiete, dieciocho, doce, diecinueve, veinte, veintiuno, ventidos, ventides, ventiquatro, ventisincos, ventisietes, ventisiete, venti... Ocho, ventid... Nueve.
So when I'm on Spanish, I am a risk taker because I can answer questions. And also being a risk taker makes you, like, do things that you wouldn't normally do in your language. You're, like, taking a step further out of your comfort zone to do something that would make you smarter.
Practice being more knowledgeable. That way I can understand the lesson. Like, if I need, I need a lesson, if I'm going to learn a new language. If I'm not listening, I'm not going to learn anything.
I'm, I'm being a risk taker because I'm learning a new language and that always is good. I am also open-minded to a new language and you can always learn from a new language.
When I practice Spanish, I like being communicative. I like communicating a lot, to practice more Spanish.
Muy feliz, muy emocionado porque me hizo traer miedo a estar hablando español. Eso me hace feliz, muy feliz.
So if I, if I think about the most challenging moment that I've had in this entire journey, it was trying to edit this video. And I think I could have easily made it like a three-hour-long film, and I do have the raw footage if anybody is interested in just hearing the whole interviews that I was able to conduct with these students. But the things that they were saying were just so remarkable and I didn't want it to end.
You had to let the little boy count to thirty.
I asked him, I asked him, I asked him to count to ten. I just said, can you count to ten? And he just kept going and I couldn't stop him and he was so happy. And that was actually quite impressive. You know, those numbers get a little bit difficult after ten in Spanish. So, but it, it just, this, this moment and just hearing from our students, it's just, it's just such a reminder of our why and why we do these things because they are reciting the IB learner profile back to us. They are confident in showing their skills, yet it's so much more than learning a language. They are learning about themselves as learners. They're learning to connect to one another. They're learning about their families. Our native Spanish speakers feel so empowered during this time because they're able to be the experts. And you might think, oh, if you're a native Spanish speaker during this time, are you feeling bored? No, not at all, because they are building bridges to communicate with their friends in different ways. As Mark said, kids are speaking to one another in Spanish outside of the classroom. And the boy who spoke in Spanish at the end, again, I had to edit it, but he was telling me how, in the hallway now, his friends greet him in Spanish. They ask him how he's doing and they have a conversation and it's just really so wonderful to see. So it's been a great experience and especially seeing it through the eyes of our students. It's just been wonderful. So in terms of where we are now in our schedule, we are currently in Harrison Avenue. We will be there until December 17th, and then we will take the last leg of the first rotation at Purchase, and then we will have our second rotation through all of our schools. And I think that the students are really excited to have the teachers come back. So that's where we are now. And to wrap up, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Mohall just to talk about our next steps.
So we are well on our way to authorization. This was a significant body of work and a necessary ingredient for us to take that final step, but along the way, there's also been numerous new units that have been written. They needed to be taught, they needed to be reflected upon, and they need to be revised. And once all of that happens, which we're still hopeful that that will be in the fall of 2025, we'll be able to finish the official part of the PYP journey, submit for authorization, and we'll have a visit team come and let us know how we're doing and give us that final seal that we can put on our websites and hang, hang on our, on our school walls. We're also hoping to come back to you in January to share some recommendations for how we might consider expanding this program. This was an amazing start and we're really happy with it. And if there's an opportunity in the future, we'd love to see it expanded.
Thank you.
That could include K1, it could include more languages, and it could include longer amounts of time. So that's where our research is at the moment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's so exciting that it's just come to fruition because I just feel like we've talked about this for years and it's, it's amazing. So congratulations to all of you and the hard work that you're doing behind the scenes and we're, like, so appreciative and the kids are clearly thriving and loving it.
I think I want to end where we began because sometimes we, we get a lot of praise when something works. But what I, what I want to pull back the curtain on and remind people is nothing here happens by accident. The amount of effort and research that Jen put in and then brought her whole group of colleagues along as they uncovered ideas, this seamless implementation is the result of extraordinarily difficult, thoughtful planning that has been executed. I, I've honestly never seen a program roll out with this level of smoothness, with the number of pieces that have to happen, and the level of enthusiasm on the part of all the faculty. And Mark, you're absolutely right, the classroom teachers are probably as excited as the kids, which is the good news. We didn't know how that was going to be received. But I also love the effect on kids because there's absolutely no doubt that our ENL students now get to share a knowledge that they've always had more directly with their kids. But it's just such, to me, a celebration of the kind of organization we are. We never go too fast, we never go too slow. We do it so that it'll sustain itself and the possibilities are endless. So I'm just so proud of you. And Jen, you're absolutely right to thank our community. And Lisa has done an incredible job of moving 8,000 things at once, but certainly the most important piece of work that we have to complete is becoming an IB district, and that is just now in arms' reach. So congratulations to the team and to all of our kids and thanks to the board for their ongoing support of this work. And that concludes my update.
Okay.
And can I say, we should let these people go home because...
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yep.
Have a wonderful night and thank you.
Great job.
Okay.
Yep. Jump right into your...
Okay. Moving on to the personnel report, I will take on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none. A, certificated personnel, one regular appointment, SED clearance received. Two, extra compensation appointment, SED clearance received. B, non-certificated personnel, one rescind appointment. C, other, one student-teacher, SED clearance received. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel report?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to the administrative report, I will take on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none. A, approval of Harrison High School 10th through 12th Theater Students Field Trip to Calicoon, New York for the NYSTEA Theater Conference. B, approval of Harrison High School Debate Team Field Trip to Fairliss Hills, Pennsylvania for a debate tournament. C, approval of Harrison High School Debate Team Field Trip to Philadelphia, Pennsylvania for a debate tournament. D, approval of Harrison High School Debate Team Field Trip to Cambridge, Massachusetts for a debate tournament. E, approval of Harrison High School Debate Team Field Trip to Cambridge, Massachusetts for a debate tournament. F, acceptance of donation from the Harrison Festival Japanese Committee. C, G, acceptance of donation from the Samuel J. Preston PTA. H, approval of grant award, planned pilot for Lewis M. Klein Middle School and Harrison High School. I, approval of CSC CPSE Minutes. J, approval of CSC CPSE Recommendations. K, approval of CSC CPSE Annual Reviews. Do I have a motion to approve the administrative report?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? I would like to thank the Harrison Festival Japanese Committee for their generous donation as well as the Samuel J. Preston PTA for their generous donation. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the Finance and Facilities Report, I will take on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none. Approval of internal audit, A, approval of internal audit services. B, Treasurers Report, October 2024. C, 2024-25 Appropriation Transfers. Do I have a motion to approve the Finance and Facilities Report?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Our next regularly scheduled business meeting will take place on December 11th, 2024, 7:00 PM here at Lewis M. Klein Middle School. Do I have a motion to close the meeting?
Before we adjourn, I just realized I needed to ask a question. What's the matter with kids today? We forgot to mention, this very successful presentation that we saw last time now has been performed.
Yes.
So congratulations to our middle school students for their performance of Guys and Dolls.
Bye-bye Birdie.
Bye-bye Birdie.
I'm sorry, bye-bye Birdie. Conrad Birdie is what I should have said. It was a great, great performance and lots of fun. The house was filled for three nights, so we're very excited for them. And sorry, somehow I forgot to get that into the update.
No, you're right. And it was so fresh. I was there on Sunday. It was wonderful. And you know what really stood out to me on Sunday because it was their last and final? All of the eighth graders stood up here and just gave recognition and how much of a family it is being part of the theater club and their experience and the backstage crew and the whole thing and their experience. It was just, it was really moving.
Yes.
So, yeah, congrats.
The tech team was amazing. Our high school kids were down here. It was just a wonderful experience. Most of the cast, I know Mrs. Maggins saw, Radium Girls, was here supporting the kids. So I didn't want to let that slip because it happened so fast, it didn't make the update. But the board enjoyed the preview and some of us enjoyed the whole show.
Yes, thank you for remembering.
We know what's the matter with kids today. Nothing.
Yes. All right, we are adjourned. Have a wonderful Thanksgiving and good night to all.
You didn't vote.
Oh, I thought we did.
Motion to close.
I cut you.
Oh, okay, sorry. Do I have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. We are adjourned. Good night, happy Thanksgiving.